Good afternoon and welcome to the January 23rd staff meeting of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. I would ask that we begin to introduce ourselves on the podium.
Kristy Rishel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summer Odomas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Alito, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. We have one item on the agenda that we've got two executive sessions, but we will start with an update on our Office of Reentry. And we have Director Trina Jackson, welcome.
Thank you, thanks for having me. Sorry, I get a little hot here. Can you key up that presentation? So I do want to say thank you for allowing me to just share the work that we've been doing in our office. And I do want to introduce someone new to our office really quickly. Starlu Guerelli is our new Office Administrator.
Welcome.
Yeah, so I'll get started. So, as you know, our office was created to disrupt that whole cycle of incarceration. And so that has been the work of our team since inception. The mission of the office really is to promote collaborative services for all returning citizens by identifying those common barriers, advocating for community resources, and offering enough support. So, our team, we say we're mighty, small but mighty. It consists of Denise Charles as a coordinator. The other coordinators include Charles Hemphill, Vestal Sims, and we have a vacant position right now. Now, that position was created to support the Hamilton County Justice Center as well as River City. River City, we have had a history of working with them. And so we want to get back to that programming that we have been offering them. But we also are supporting the Justice Center Care Pods, being able to provide that reentry support pre-release as well as post-release. We also have Starlu Guerelli and a transition specialist. That position was created to support the Hamilton County Docket, the reentry docket. So, just kind of looking back at 2023 and the type of, awesome. So, just kind of looking back at 2023 and the type of client contacts that we've had, the number, we've had about 1,300 client contacts. And that includes new clients coming to our office. It also includes, you know, returning clients, but also people who just come by our office because they need help with their vital records. You know, you need an ID to get a job, need an ID to apply for apartment. And when you don't have that, that's a barrier. So, we help them get those documents. Typically, we're able to get those documents from the Justice Center. Their medical records is something that they're able to present to the BMV and be able to get their ID. As far as the type of clients that we serve, predominantly African-American males between the age of 31, 45. A number of them have felonies, you know, high-level felonies, mid to low-level felonies. Forty-five percent of them are on community control, so they're on probation or parole. So, we have good relationships with our probation department as well as the state parole department. As far as the frequent needs, it's housing and employment. It stays the same every year. It's always housing and employment. So, that's where we've been putting a lot of our focus in our work is on that housing and employment piece. But there's something I want to just kind of draw your attention to, which is the special needs of our clients. Ten percent of them really, they have chronic mental illness. We deal with that on a regular basis. And that means we have to rely on resources in our community to support those individuals, especially when they're in crisis. Nine point seven percent of them chronically homeless, six percent substance abuse. And then that five point five percent, that drug dependent, that means they're actively in addiction while they're working with their office. We're working with them and kind of helping with it. Four point two percent are veterans. And then the other thing I want to draw your attention to is that 59% housing insecure. That means that they're couch surfing, they're in some type of transitional housing, or they just, they have no place to really land. And that is, of course, a major, major issue for our clients. So, how do we approach this work? We approach it from four different perspectives. Client engagement, our judicial engagement, programming, and advocacy. So, on a daily basis, we're working with clients in our office. And we're doing it from this H-core way is what we call it. So, I'm going to switch to this one. So, what is the H-core way? That, that process starts, and by the way, reentry is a process. We don't say reentry, you know, it's just connecting people to resources. You know, that's, reentry is way broader, way broader than that. So, it's a process. And so we have to walk with those individuals, you know, on their journey of reentry, because this is a journey. You know, it has its ups and its downs, its ebbs and its flows. But we spend a great deal of time just walking with people and, and meeting them where they are. So, we start by building rapport with those individuals. And we can't, there's not much we can do with somebody if we can't build a relationship with them. So, we work hard at doing that. But we also start with identifying their basic needs. It's important, you know, to actually start there because there's, that's the foundation. If we don't address people's basic needs, they can't maintain their employment, they can't maintain their housing. So, we have to do that first. So, once we have taken the time to get to know them, figure out what their basic needs are, we start working on those longer-term goals. Longer-term goals, and typically they include employment and housing. So, that, that's a theme, a common theme throughout the work that we do, no matter what, no matter what we're talking about. It's housing and employment. So, we start by building relationships, addressing basic needs, looking at longer-term goals to achieve stability, and then provide this ongoing support. So, that's the client engagement piece. The other aspect of our approach is the programming. So, we rely on evidence-based practices to create the programming that we do. And we know that those evidence-based practices are, have been shown to reduce recidivism. So, that means having access to resources like healthcare, mental care, education, employment, stable housing, all of those things. If you have those things, typically you're not going in and out of the criminal justice system, you know? So, our programming right now, because we don't have the programming we had prior to the pandemic, unfortunately. But we have been able to restart or kind of reestablish the Preparing Incarcerated Women for Sustainable Careers Initiative. That was created, ooh, back in 2018, I believe, with Cincinnati State and River City. Now, the goal of that was to equip women with their supply chain logistics certificates while they were incarcerated. Pandemic, of course, changed that, but we were able to bring us a fifth cohort back, right? So, not bring them back, but actually create a new cohort at River City. And NKU became our partner this past year. They offer classes around IT and Microsoft Suite, things like that. So, the women got a certificate, and that allowed us to have that fifth cohort of women. So, I would say we've had about over 40 women get some form of education or certificate while they're incarcerated at River City. Let's see, the Care Pods, that's in process. I mentioned that earlier. We are actually preparing to provide that reentry support for people while they're incarcerated in those pods, but once they're also released. Let's see, what else is in process is the River City programming. We're trying to get back into River City. So, the position that is vacant that I mentioned earlier will help us do that. Let's see, the probation call-ins. Now, this is something that's really new, and it's very exciting because these call-ins started with SERF. So, if you remember this, what was it? Initiative to Reduce Violence, I thought Denise was back there. It was Initiative to Reduce Violence, and it was an initiative at the city of Cincinnati. And that time, during that time, we were bringing in people who were considered on the top 20 list of most violent. Bringing them to the table, all right? If, you know, if you take advantage of these resources that are around this table, then, you know, hopefully you can stay out of the system. But if we catch you, is what the law enforcement was saying, we're going to throw the book at you. So, a lot of people took advantage of that and during those SERF meetings. So, unfortunately, of course, COVID just derailed a lot of that. But we've been able to reestablish it with our Hamilton County Probation Department, bringing low-level drug dealers to a very small setting within a community so that we can kind of talk with them, kind of get to understand what their needs are, and see if we can support them to the point where they are not reoffending. So, we held about four or five of those sessions in the community, and they went well. They went well. I think there's about 33 people that came through, and I believe only two of them actually have had a new offense since those conversations happened. So, that was good. It's a, it's a pilot program. So, what else are we doing? We are also approaching this work from the judicial approach, right? So, the Welcome Home Reentry Docket, that is an initiative that's a common police court work or partnership. And that allows people who are eligible for judicial release to be released early to the county. Judge Wendy Cross presides over that docket. And we wrap them with very intense reentry services. So that, you know, it's not necessarily case management, but it's a form of case management. So that, you know, we have even closer engagement with those individuals. That has been going well. We have about two people who are ready to graduate. It started actually accepting clients last year. But that is something that, you know, there's really no reentry docket in southwest Ohio. We're the only one, Hamilton County. So, we're building it as we, we're building the bus as we drive it for the most part. We're also engaged judicially with the municipal court. It started with Judge Trotter-Bretton, and Judge Dante Johnson actually picked up where she left off. So, we are now, we have been working with Judge Johnson and accepting clients directly from him. These individuals are placed on probation for a year, and so it is referred to as a municipal reentry program. So, we're supporting the courts from a common pleas and a municipal perspective. So, the last thing I want to talk about as far as the approaches that we take to this work is advocacy. We advocate to address the barriers that actually our clients are challenged with, right? And so, like I always say, it's housing, employment, access to services. And I feel like a broken record, but that's it. You know what I mean? That's it. So, I want to thank you, first of all, for actually allowing us to have access to dollars for reentry housing. There aren't a lot of models out there for reentry housing at all, so thank you, I appreciate it. We are working with CDF, Community Development Fund, to create this reentry housing model. I did participate in the Housing as a Pathway to Justice work group. It's a national work group. It was a grant, a federal grant that was given to the enterprise group. So, with that participation came technical support. So, that gave us a consultant to help us through a strategic planning process with CDF to create the backbone or the foundation for the reentry housing program. So, we're working on eligibility, geographical areas, we want to focus on number of landlords we want to work with and things like that. So, we're just putting all the pieces together for this reentry housing model. So, when I talk about housing, the, the people that need housing that we work with, I think about two groups. There's individuals who need emergency, I need a place to land, gap housing, right? Then there are individuals who, they have income, they've been income-stable for a while. They've been living with mom, aunt, dad, no one will lease to them. So, those individuals need a chance. They need somebody to lease to them. So, that reentry housing model will approach or will respond to that need, put it that way. The gap housing, we're still working on it. But hopefully, you know, soon we will have a partner that will allow us to provide some space for people to land and get themselves together. We support them with the wraparound services, and then they can move on to more stable housing. It's also, also part of the advocacy piece is access to resources. So, the one-stop, I want to talk about the one-stop. The one-stop has been something that I just never knew it would impact people in the way that it does. And we created that with a lot of people at the table. Sheriff's Office, ARC was at the table, ODRC, Interact for Health at the table to create this initiative, to bring services to people in the community. And so, we, we thought, well, why can't we just provide on-time services? Let people go directly to treatment. You know, let people have access to someone that will look at their record and, you know, tell them if it can be expunged or, you know, changed anyway. So, that's what's been happening for several years, and I'm excited that we've been able to partner with the 513 Relief Bus. The bus, we've been in, what, six different neighborhoods or so all of last year? And it works out so well. I mean, it really was a great experience having that bus there and all of these 40-plus services in one location. That I, I get a little excited about it. But we were able to support 1,000, over 1,000 people by doing that. So, it's a model I believe works. I believe the model works. And of course, the most frequent need is housing and employment. I know I sound like a broken record, but it's always housing and employment. Okay, and lastly is the employment piece. So, we advocate for employers to hire returning citizens. We try to build relationships with new employment partners. Second chance hiring, I know it can be a catchphrase, but it's, it can't just be done because you want to do it. You know what I mean? It has to be something that, that organization does to change its culture, to, to accept individuals with backgrounds, you know, in many cases. Because, you know, some challenges, not all employers will understand, you know? And so, we try to work with those individuals so that our clients can be successful in their environment. So, we have a lot of partners that we work with. We've added several throughout last year. But what we do is not just refer them to an employer, but we provide them with that retention support so that, you know, challenges come up, communication, how do I fit into this new culture? You know, the coordinators are there to work with them, kind of coach them through that process. So, we've also embarked on this whole ORW, Ohio Reformatory for Women partnership with the county. It's, it's interesting because Franklin County and the city of Columbus have done this. So, these women at ORW are learning to build a house from the ground up. Footers, electric, HVAC, everything. And so, they're moving into positions that are, you know, part of facilities, departments at the city of Columbus and Franklin County. It's been very successful. And so, the thought is how do we make that happen here? We're, I'm working with Frank Spataro to create structure, you know, build some structure to the program. But I do have a conversation coming up this week to help understand how those entities actually prefer women, you know, provide preference to those women to come into those roles at the county and at the city. Because that could be a barrier here if we don't figure out how to make that happen. Let's see, so we also partnered with Local 12 to offer a job fair. It was a second chance job fair, it was at CityLink last fall. And so, we have another one coming up February 26th or 27th, I think. So, we'll be doing that soon as well. So, I did want to show you a few of our clients and their success stories. So, we have an individual here, gentleman here. He met somebody from my staff on the bus. He's gotten his license, started with his ID, got his license, and now he's preparing to get a CDL. He's been promoted twice. Okay, awesome. This is my super amazing team. Let's see, and that's Denise Charles, I want to introduce you. This is Vestal Sims. And there's Mr. Chuck Hemphill. So, this is another client. He's driving a truck and doing very well. Yes, mhm, yep, mhm. And he has some real special needs as well. Another person got assistance with their housing, got their driver's license and a job. And this individual, he, yeah, he may recognize him. He works at Dunkin' Donuts across the street, and he's doing very well. So, you know, we're, we're excited, of course, to always, and passionate. That's the thing about the team, very passionate to provide support for this population. But we want to make sure, you know, we're being effective at doing that. And so, we do have a client survey that we ask people to fill out when they leave. And so, you know, we're asking them about four questions. You know, we're asking them if they're satisfied with their service that day. Eighty-two percent said yes. Did the staff treat you with professionalism? Ninety-eight percent said yes. Did they feel like their privacy was respected or secured? Ninety-one percent said yes. And then, did the staff make you feel respected or heard? And 96% said yes. So, we want to not just say that we're trying to do good work, but we want to make sure, you know, that our clients are happy with what we're, we're providing. So, that's all I have today. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for your work and all the work of your staff. This is not an easy, easy job. Because when one comes out, they have so much stacked against them to try to rebuild and stay on the straight and narrow, but there's so many obstacles. And there's obstacles, like you said, with ID, mounting cost. If some of them may have child support, it doesn't stop. And so, they have this bill when they come out, not being able to find housing, can't go back to where they were in so many cases. And so, where do you begin? So, I want to thank you for the work that your office is doing and has done. And Hamilton County has been a leader, I think was one of the first counties to have a reentry office. I think I was at the State House then. But this issue for me goes back to my days on city council with Rob Portman, who was a congressman at the time. And he came with the Second Chance Act, and now we have reentry programs. One of the things I wanted to highlight, thank you for the bus. I'm glad that's a great partnership and allows us to go mobile and bring people in and get the one-stop with your one-stop model that you have, which I think is very important, so people don't have to drive all over town. Or go over here, and go over there, and go over here. So, I think that is very effective that you've been doing. I did have a question. You had mentioned that we're trying to get back on track, but you said since the pandemic. Were we doing something more before the pandemic that we're no longer able to do now? Or what did you mean by that part?
Right, the programming piece. So, we had a pod at the Justice Center from 2017 to 2020. And I always leave a little picture on our, our template. We won a NACO award for that model, for innovation. And so, the goal of that was to provide pre-release planning. For, it was about 16 men in a pod. And so, we had about 157 people go through, about an 11% recidivism rate because we tracked them for 12, 12 months to see if they had any other offenses. But the core of the program was cognitive behavior intervention. We brought resources into the jail providers, we looked at trauma-informed care, we had NA and AA meetings in the pod. It was very full and robust, basically, as far as the program was concerned. But, you know, of course, after the pandemic, we just weren't able to bring it back.
Got you. Is there anything that, I know you said housing is a mother. Is there anything that, from your perspective, that we are missing? Or there's an opportunity that's being missed that we should be looking at?
It's the gap housing piece. Having a place for people to land and get themselves together so they can move on to more stable housing. And so, you know, there's a conversation I'm having with ODRC to see if we can make that work with maybe someone who, an organization that actually provides extended stay-type housing. I don't know what it's going to look like, so I don't want to say too much about it. But if we can make that work, we can maybe have access to about 10 units and give people three, well, really, not 30 days, but 90 days, 60 to 90 days of housing, and support them, get them ready to move out to a more stable environment. But we just have people that really need someplace to land, you know? And then we also have people who can afford market rate or low income rent, but they just won't, no one will rent to them. So, that housing, that gap housing, I mean, we are, we struggle trying to find a place for people to land.
The other thing, we had a program when Great American Ballpark, they were doing some reseating there. And it was a partnership where there was jobs, it was between reentry and us and Great American, and they were able to make some dollars. And now, we have voted on some upgrades in our, well, Pay Corps Stadium. And I'd asked the administrator to look into if there, if there are projects like that or other projects, because we've got a lot of different projects that we do that maybe can be, because I think we've got awards and so forth for that project. But to see if that's something we can do with your office. And I don't know if, Mr. Ludo, if you had an update on that by chance?
Not a full update, other than to say that, I think it was initially brought up in the context of the seat project. The seat project was bid for rather immediate implementation, and the company had bid with its own workforce. So, that's not something that we'd be prepared to move forward on the seat project. But we're going to continue to look at the other projects and the renovation scope as well as the regular capital program across the county as well, and see where there might be opportunities for fitting in with, with reentry and reentry population.
Okay, great, because that's something I thought would be good with your, to work with your office on, as we are doing so many capital projects and improvements, and maybe there's some synergy there with jobs, training, and so forth. So, and then I guess my last piece is, I know that we've been dealing with trying to help people get their records expunged. There's people that's way older, said I made a mistake when I was, you know, 19, and I'm now 45, and I can't get a job. Is there, are you seeing anything there? Are we, I know we've been working with, I guess, the Public Defender's Office and those kind of things. Have we made any movement, you think, in there, or them working with your office? Because some people don't know where to go or how to even begin that process.
Right, I think that's an area that we could put more attention to. And when people call, we, you know, we refer them to the Public Defender's Office. They have an event that they do every, is it every three weeks or every three months? First and third Wednesday. And you can come, they'll review your record, tell you if it can be expunged or sealed. And we always refer people there. But I think where we could do more is just making it public more aware of that. You know, maybe we do something like some marketing and promote the fact that they're having those two sessions, and please take advantage of it. I think you might, you know, be able to have your record sealed. We can do that, absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to put that on the, on that radar, because also court cost is a, you can't get it expunged if you have a courthouse. So, I would like to just see if there's any way we can have a, the public defender can have a better relationship with you, and we got to see how we might be able to help in that way. Because if you don't have money or you're on a job and your money's going to child support and you're trying to put a little food on your table, it makes it difficult to be able to pay for the expungement process. So, I just wanted to put that on the radar to take a look at.
We'll put that on our, one of our priorities.
Thank you.
Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you to the team for being here. It's good to see everyone, even behind the podium.
It's good to see everyone, even behind the podium, I'm catching you guys. Um, yeah, we were talking all around you the other day. We had a conversation about reentry and how the governor had come down and how he highlighted the work that you're doing in Hamilton County along with your team. So thank you all for being here um, to give us just an update, really, on the work that you're doing. Um, so I have a couple of questions. I wanted to start with the end of your presentation when you showed the client survey. Those are pretty impressive numbers uh, with a population that can be challenging and has a great deal of need. Uh, and so to have those kinds of responses from people about the work you're doing must be very gratifying for you. And I just wanted to highlight that and give you a little bit of a shout out, because that's, those are impressive numbers and an impressive amount of gratitude, I think, probably from the population that you're dealing with. Um, so a couple of questions uh, keying in on some of the things that you said. So when you have a client and they are moving out of the justice system and you are providing support, as you said, inside the system and then beyond that, how long do you usually follow a client? And what, what does that look like by way of kind of client care as they move back into the community?
Right, so um, we follow, we stick with someone as long as they will work with us. We never really take anybody off of our caseload unless they ask to be taken off. So, you know, if we have somebody that came in in March, we helped them get their ID, um, connected them with some mental health care, um, connect them with a job. Um, and now they seem to be doing okay. We're still following up with those individuals. But if they don't need us until January, we're here, you know what I mean? And so we'll follow up and we'll work with them in whatever need they have at that time. Um, I remember there was someone we had worked with, hadn't seen him for a while, came back and just asked, can you help me get custody of my kids? And so I think Denise, you helped him get custody of his kids, but it hadn't seen him for six months, maybe till a year. So um, that's kind of what it looks like. Um, Denise, did you have anything else to finish that?
Well, like you said, um, Trina, it's, it's never ending. Because reentry is a process, so there is highs and lows. So we can get a long.
If you go speak that long, you gotta come to the microphone so they can hear you. I follow, no, no, we gotta get you on camera and it's a whole process. I thought I was loud. No, I don't like to talk in public with this accent. But anyway, um, when we receive a client, it could be, it, we'll have that client for as long, like Trina said, as we need them. So what initially happens is we, they come into the office, we do an assessment with them. A lot of times they don't even, they know about the office of reentry, but they don't know what we're all about. So we meet them where they are, in no judgment zone. And from that point, based on what they hope to accomplish, we walk the journey with them. So it can be as simple as a state ID and job readiness, okay? And then you have that client that's, okay, see you guys later. And then they might call us back in a month and say, hey, I got a job, you know? And then they call and say, well, my supervisor's getting on my nerves. And, and we're like, don't quit the job, you know? And we're coaching them, we're telling them, come in, let's coach, let's talk about this, you know? Job readiness skills, job retention, life stuff, you know? Because they've never had, they've done it on their own. And so now they have a lifeline to say, hey, let me call and see what's the best way to handle this. So we never close the door to our clients. And like I said, once they accomplish one thing, then the next goal that they have, I had a guy that came in, um, you guys talked about the expungement process. Ironically, I had him when he was a juvenile, and now he's a grown man. He was in the prison system because he didn't listen to me. But anyway, long story short, he um, came into the system, he got his food stamps when he first got out. He got a job and everything like that. He didn't retain a job, he got another job, he finally got on his feet, right? Then a year later, he called me back and this, this year, he said, I need to get custody of my kids. How do, how do I do that? And so we walked through that process. He called me, he said, I got custody of the kids. No, he got it expunged, he got his record expunged first, because he wanted to get that done before he got his kids. So he had his own goal. He knew what he wanted to do, he just didn't know how to go about it. So I, I like to think that we are very, we make people feel very comfortable when we, when they come in. We are no judgment zone, you see we're small. Um, but the thing that we do is we, we customize each client to what they want, what their goals are, you know? And then we walk them through the process and we, we tell them, you're going to fall. Things are not going to go your way. But if you just trust in the process and let us help you, you'll get there. So that's what hap- that's what happens a lot with our clients. And when we don't hear from them, I go straight to the J F C website, the Justice Center website, to see if they're not, if they're there. If they're not there, then it's like, okay, something's going on. But a lot of times, um, I'm really proud of the clients that I serve, because if they, if they don't get it right, they do come back. And that's, that's, that's the goal of the office. I hope I answered.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Awesome.
Really helpful. Um, so Trina, you mentioned that some of the services i- in the Justice Center, because you had that pod identified previously before COVID. Do you expect that to pick up again once the um, the ninety beds are open?
Um, to actually get back into having a pod?
Or rather, providing the services that you were providing in the pod?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Um, we're able to do that through the care pods, those, those addiction and mental health pods. We'll be able to do that. So um, we'll go into the pod, bring other providers and other resources for those individuals that are actually going through treatment while they're in the jail. Um, and then when they're released, but prior to their release, we'll create a reentry plan. Then when they're released, we'll follow up on that plan and help them walk through that plan.
Yeah, I just, it seemed like an obvious nexus, but I just wanted to make sure. And one last thing, so you mentioned uh, uh, related to housing, um, the two needs for gap housing and long-term housing. And your convers- and, and we have identified funding for this specific population through the ARPA dollars uh, being managed by C D F. And you're talking to C D F. Are you talking to them about um, the gap housing piece or the long? I, I'm wondering what the conversations are like? And uh, what do you anticipate uh, coming from those conversations? Whether it is an increase in gap housing available in the community? Or if, if it's on the long-term side or maybe both?
Right, right, so that strategic planning process allowed us to identify what we really need to focus on with these type of funds, and it will be the long-term housing. Yeah, um, we want to have landlords that will rent to these individuals because they can afford low income, you know, like seven hundred dollars to twelve hundred dollars in rent. So um, and they've never, you know, recently at least, had, had the ability to have their own unit. And so we want to help somebody get their name on a lease and say, this is my, this is my place. So um, yeah, that, that's what that strategic planning process allowed us to be able to do with that.
Do you have any idea how many units you're talking about that would be available?
Right, so um, we want to start and maybe go through phases. So the first phase may be about eight to ten units. Um, because, you know, the C D F is still working to identify how the dollars will be used. So will it be acquisition, uh, will it be acquisition and rehab, probably? Um, you know, what skin in the game should the landlords have? Should they be paying, should they be identifying it and coming up with the down payment? You know, to actually get the, purchase the um, the building? And then the other question is, okay, what do we do about concentrated reentry housing? Do we want concentrated reentry housing? Um, I don't see a problem with it, especially with this part of our population. You know, they're able to afford this level of housing. Um, so, you know, it looks like they're pretty stable in the community. They just need an opportunity. So um, you know, there's some things that C D F, some deliverable C D S, C D F has on their end. But are, for our end of the, the conversation, you know, we identified, we want to work with two landlords to start. Um, eight to ten units is where we want to, you know, um, focus our attention. And then we also want to look at kind of the northern and eastern parts of Hamilton County for the purposes of, of um, having access to employment centers and public transportation. So um, we kind of, as a team, went through, sorry, um, you know, what, how we want this reentry housing to look like, just to start it out, you know, to get a foundation, to move, you know, to actually having a, a ward made at some point soon, hopefully. Like March is kind of the target. And so we are working from a project management standpoint. Um, and so we've identified March as um, the time where we want to be able to issue the R F P. Um, and hopefully after that, soon after that, within a couple of months, award.
Thank you. Um, I had one other question about county jobs and opportunities at the county, but I think you're going to hear more about that from Commissioner Summer O'Dumas. So I'm going to leave that behind. Uh, and because, you know, as we ask different businesses, corporations, nonprofits in our community to participate in hiring folks that are reentering the community, um, I think we need to lead by example at the county. And so I, I, I will leave it there, but um, I too am interested in that and to get a better understanding of how that's, what's that's going to look like, I guess, in the future. So thanks again for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Dumas.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. You guys are small but mighty. Um, doing uh, phenomenal work. Um, which a group, this is a group that people have a lot of resistance toward, I don't have to tell you. And some misunderstanding about some people who have made some mistakes uh, and are trying to build their lives. So I certainly appreciate all of you. Um, just a couple of questions um, and comments. I know uh, you and Bishop Hilton, my chief of staff, worked, started working last year on the RISE initiative, which is, which stands for Reentry Into Society and Employment. And we talked with you and you said there is a program uh, at Marysville uh, that the women are in, let's not reinvent the wheel and see how we can, uh, as you were saying, you're having a conversation uh, tomorrow about how we can incorporate, not only the women here, but, you know, look further on as far as the men. Because uh, I have found that the black men that I run into that have issues with this, uh, it's so much harder for them to get into the workforce, uh, be it resistance or just a, just a fear or whatever it is. But we have to do, make sure we uh, both populations are covered. Couple of things with your presentation, um, I noticed, I said five, there are five positions, not including the administrator, and two of them are vacant. Um, and that's why I say small but mighty. Um, you have impacted thirteen hundred and thirty clients. Um, so I guess my question is, and you're doing a great job, but do you need more staff? Um, sometimes more is not better. Uh, but uh, do, do you need more staff? I think about specifically, they're all saying yes. But I think specifically, um, you mentioned about the mental health issues and all of that. And I, I think about the societal aspects of it. I remember years ago, uh, working at Beach Acres, and we would go into uh, the prison before people were released to deal with healthy relationships. Your family has changed, society has changed, and how do you deal with that? I could see it just another component of how to deal with the societal changes in your family uh, or just society in general. So I'm just throwing out, you know, I know you guys are, are doing, I'm going to say again, a phenomenal job. But we want to keep our staff, we don't want to burn them out. Uh, we don't want them, to stretch them uh, too thin. Everyone I've talked to, I think, I don't think I've had the opportunity to talk to this gentleman, but the passion just keeps you going, you know? So uh, I just wanted to throw that out, I'm looking over at Jeff. But it's up to you, I mean, if you feel you need to do that. Uh, Jeff, on the seat replacements, you said we had sent out a R F P on that. Have we actually signed the agreement on that?
Yes.
We have signed it.
Moving forward.
Okay.
But we're going to look at a lot of.
Sure, I heard that.
Opportunities as well. And Commissioner, if I could just interject real quickly on your, your last question um, as it relates to staffing and programming. Um, reentry has a couple of different funding sources, but I think the primary one is the, uh, at least one of the primary funding sources is the Family and Services Treatment Levy, uh, which is up for review this year. So as we look at a potential need for program expansion, et cetera, the T L R C will be looking at that. Um, and we'll be plugging Tr- uh, Trina indirectly on that. So if there's some recommendations on additional programming that could be done with additional staff and how that relates to levy sizing, uh, we'll certainly come back to the board with a recommendation on that as well.
Okay, thank you so much. And I can remember uh, when I first uh, met Deanna Hoskins, we talked earlier about that and starting the reentry program. I didn't know her then, but a little bit later, and I went to one of her conferences. And um, we used to have a list of which restaurants can hire these returning citizens. And I, and I remember her telling us, tear up the list, that everybody should be hiring reentry, uh, which they don't do as we know. So I'm so happy about this and happy of the additional work that you and Bishop and Frank has been involved, uh, working real hard to make this happen. So, but if you can clarify for me, we've, both commissioners have asked about the behavioral intervention you were doing for the pods, and you said you'd like to bring it back. So just clarify for me, it's not funding that you need to bring it back? What is it that you need to bring it back?
Right, so um, we had, it's ironic that we're having this conversation. We did have a conversation, myself and Judge Cross, um, about, with the sheriff, about bringing the pod back and using that pod to actually um, support or, or funnel people through that would be part of the reentry docket. Um, and so that conversation, um, the sheriff indicated that once the pods are up and running, maybe there will be enough staff to, for us to have a pod again. So those care pods are priority number one right now. Um, but once those are up and running, you know, hopefully we'll be able to have a pod for reentry specifically again, once that, that happens.
Well, one last comment, um, I noticed that your statistics said the average age was, hold on, thirty-one to forty-five. And my first thought was, how do we reach the younger ones? Not that we don't care about the older ones, but how do we reach the younger ones? And maybe even before they come out? Um, do we give them something on their way out that tells them to come to you, the younger ones? I know that's your average age, so I'm sure you get some younger ones. But I was just really um, wondering why we don't have younger ones that are coming out. And I wonder, is it because they don't know or like you were saying, couch surfing, things like that? So um, it'll be interesting as we move forward this year if we're able to get any younger ones, um, so, more younger ones, I should say. And what we need to do, uh, does it need to be a social media a- attack or exposure for them to know uh, that you guys are available to them? So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, thank you for your work. And um, we look forward to hearing more about the initiatives, new initiatives that you're working on.
I appreciate it, and we appreciate the support that comes from the commission. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you all. Um, next, we're going into an executive session, but before we do, uh, today is Commission Vice President Denise Drehouse's birthday.
Just drudgery. Thank you, Denise.
They said a cat is out the bag. So just wanted to say happy birthday uh, to you. And in honor of your birthday, we're going to hopefully make it brief.
Oh, I love these executive sessions.
You can go celebrate, but happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Okay, um.
Trying to keep this under wraps.
Too, too late, now all of Hamilton County knows.
That's right.
Okay, I make a motion to go into executive session. Um, one, two, one, two, two, G, four, to discuss collective bargaining. Can I do them all? The collective, okay. Collective bargaining, item number two, item number three, uh, collective bargaining, and then item number four, um, to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning amnesty.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.